Oh, three. Ladies, are we ready to go?
Yes.
Okay, it's nine oh three. This is the Law and Order Committee of the twenty-fifth Navajo Nation Council. This is a special meeting. The special meeting allowed us to start this meeting early at nine AM. We're gonna go ahead and call, do roll call at this time. Lori, can you assist us with roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Honorable members of Law and Order Committee and everyone here in the room, also on this Zoom call. This is roll call for Law and Order Committee for the year twenty twenty-five at the Law and Order Committee Conference Room in Winterfell, Arizona. Honorable Stephen Arvizo, are you present? Honorable Stephen Arvizo did not answer roll call. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
Present.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. is present. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton.
I'm present.
Honorable Eugene Charles Newton is present. Honorable Nathan Nota. Honorable Nathan Nota did not answer roll call. Honorable Arvin Mitchell. Honorable Arvin Mitchell is present. Madam Chair, with three members present, which constitutes a one, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. I did get a text message from Delegate Nathan Nota, who stated that he will not be.
That he will be a little late.
Yeah. Actually, he's asking to be excused today. He has a meeting with McKinley County this morning. So we're gonna go ahead and excuse Delegate Nota text message. Delegate Arvizo is still planning to attend, so he's probably running a little bit late. So we'll go ahead and we'll just leave his blank until he, until he.
Okay.
Comes. Okay, so with that committee member, we do, committee members, we do have a quorum with three members present. One delegate excused, one who is on their way. We're gonna go ahead and proceed at this time to invocation. So I'm gonna go ahead and, Shiyaj, Delegate Daniels, are you okay to provide invocation for us this morning?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Honorable Mitchell, and the staff, Legislative Council, and the staff, the speakers, all the staff. Thank you. Gudou ei hoon. Gudou ei sorozanegi bena niil neet olish gudou. Di beni biye. Aru ben yeihlouei gudou ei sorozan behana neetsi do gudou ei nchabena niil neet olish. Aru nanato ei alsho beewenit era ancha jokwa ei neet da. Aru gudou. Di chenila hona llo dohlas ghoon shli na na li ni hun. Da hona llo jo na shiilsoi da hona llo mo di dene. Di chenila hona llo mo. Aru hunad, di chun gudou. Ban daui dot ihi dohna napai ihiln da dohnehegih gudou. Ben hi gahnot eh dohlech hun. Sa di adhat ehhi dohna nohun. Nsa kes yaat ehgi hun. Eh beni la hona llo dohlech aru hun do ei ba'i nehet lohun. Ni esla ho. Eh doh beni ilni dohlech na kaba adahlia. Aru nanan esla dohun. Aru shi yoal khalna bet jahna benana shi ilni ilha. Bet hi ka'au. Na ahghal auho. Aru nanha shi ahghalna benana shi ilni ilho. Na khabal da hona llo. Eh odai hun doh ei beni ilni dohlech ni eslaun leneki. Aru nanasthui dosani. Nda haz dha'aj auhun. Eh doh hun. Na khabal da hona llo hun. Hakazbi yon hilana da lesrih hun. Hakazik hun. Hichahol ni dohlech hichabetsiil auhun. Da bedochha. Aru na kha'ahl shuna. Eh doh hun benana shi deil auhun. Oldcha. Ahui, ahui beni dohnan hilsho na da ha'ka'au. Na gaid nohun da mobi lka'ron len da ainis benana shana ili. Eh doh na khabal da hona llo hun. Alsa ba'handleneki. Eh doh hun. Ashin lsoi gudou ei benhi tsiil auhun. Alsho hun gudson auhun. Alsa ba'handlenan. Ki alshen na dohnan asthui dosani. Aru betcha auhun itlo ni doh hun. Ni chiro na kha'ahlwa ba'i auhun. Ni chiro na ilha hona llo hun. Aru nanan hun. Da ainis danla hun. Sa ga'ahlza negi hun. Executive branch, ash da ainisegi alsho hun. Na kha'ahlshen na deil nechegi hun. President, Vice President, aru bada ainisegi hun. Khabal da hona llo hun. Aru nanan Legislative Branch. Speaker. Kui ash ahba'ainis gudou eh doh. Alsho hun khabal da hona llo hun. Aru chudishu. Branch, ash da ainisildo. Aru hun shnan da da'andleneki. Beesh, beesh bahas antanleneki hun. Aru ba'alshen hun. Bha'na haz a'jau hun. Na khabal, na khabal da hona llo hun. Khaba'adahlia hun. Aru ni esda'ahl la'ansoau hun. Yekan da't jahgi hun. Eh doh hun. Na khaba'adahlia. Aru hega itai alsho hun. Da eh hun doh ei sorozanegi beni ilni dohlech aru nanan hun. Ya't ehwa'i hun. Edat ilni lo ya't ehwa'indatiilnech di chen aru skharu iwochana. Ashin odai dohlech doh hun. Gudou ei alsho da'aini chun dohlech hun. La shi ba'ohedish la duh la shi bila'dish land. Sha'aki hunel a'adahlis hun. Sha'aki hunel a'adahlis di chen na na li ni hun. Alshen hichun dohlech hun. Ha't ashand da'hanat ahna hokos. Nechni yachniren hichun dohlech hun. Hujon hasli, hujon hasli, hujon hasli, hujon hasli. Thank you, Chair.
Shiyaj, Delegate Daniel.
Morning, everyone.
Thank you. Delegate Daniel, thank you for providing us invocation this morning and for thinking of, of all the leaders and, and all the people who, who work for, for us also. I appreciate that. We're gonna now move to item number two. Oh, for the record, Delegate Arvizo, in case the, the record didn't hear, Delegate Arvizo is, is here. So we're gonna go ahead and now move to item number two, recognizing guests and visiting officials. We do have people who are present, who are going to be presenting their legislation, so we can go ahead and have them introduce themselves at that time. So committee members, if there is no objection, we'll go ahead and move past recognizing guests and visiting officials. Okay, we are now gonna move to item number three, review and adopt the agenda. Lorraine, can you go ahead and read the agenda into the record, please?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Agenda of the Law and Order Committee, please, if not, in chief council. Special meeting, October thirtieth. Twenty twenty-five, ninety AM, presiding. Honorable Eugene Charles Newton, chairperson. Honorable Nathan Nota, Vice Chairperson, location. Law and Order Committee, Pupus Room, Winterfell, Arizona. One, the tall meeting, the order, roll call and invocation. Number two, recognize guests, guests and visiting officials, three, the agenda. Number four, the journals. There are three journals. September fifteenth, November twenty-second, and October ninth, thirty twenty-five. By receiving reports, A. Received report from Justice Ray Austin, retired, regarding commentary on revisions to Title Seven, seven. That are in addition to those done by Judicial Conduct Commission, dated June sixth, twenty twenty-four. B, report from Division Public Safety on the Northern Fair and Western Navajo Fair. Six old business none, seven new business, eight. Legislation number zero two three four dash twenty-five. B, legislation number zero two three five dash twenty-five. C, legislation number zero two three three dash twenty-five. D, discussion to meet with Judicial Conduct Commission, date, time, and place. Eight calls of meeting, announcement, and adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Lorraine. So with that committee members, the agenda has been read into the record. Can I get a motion in a second at this time? Motion made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell, second by Delegate Stephen Arvizo. Committee members, are there any questions to the agenda or any amendments that need to be offered at this time? Delegate Mitchell, the floor, yours.
Thank you. A question first is the spirit from me.
Um, Lorraine, do we know if Ms. Parish's, Chair Parish is gonna be?
I did send them the agenda yesterday, but she didn't say anything.
Uh, let me.
It's coming or not.
Let me text her really quickly.
Like to make an amendment to add a legislation.
Okay.
Um, let me add zero two four nine dash two five.
Zero two four nine dash two five.
The sponsor is here, and then also. The individuals say.
Okay, so we do have legislation number zero two four nine dash two five. Before I recognize that, Lorraine, just for the record, are there any other legislations that are ready for committee action this morning?
Um, Madam Chair, thank you, and members of the Law and Order. No, it's just this one that needs to be added.
Zero two four nine dash two five. Okay. Committee members, for legislation number zero two three four dash two five, sponsored by Delegate Shandine Parish, as well as legislation number zero two three five dash two five, also sponsored by Chair Shandine Parish. Committee members, as we do here at Law and Order Committee, since we do not have final, final authority over these two legislations, final authority rests with Navajo Nation Council on both legislations. As, as committee members, we do, we can co-sponsor to get the legislation through the process, or if the members are not feeling comfortable with sponsoring the legislation, we can go ahead and we can defer these two legislations to the next Law and Order Committee meeting. I did check for the record, I did text Chair Parish at nine thirteen AM, just like two minutes ago. Haven't heard a, a response from her yet, so I'll go ahead and leave it up to the committee members on how they want to proceed. Delegate Mitchell, you still hold the floor for your amendment number one?
I would like to make another. With this motion, I'd like to move the two legislation that. Delegate. All has.
Okay.
Before they report.
Okay. Uh, so that would be legislation number zero two four nine dash two five, as well as legislation number zero two three three dash two five. So those items seven, well, one is being added to the agenda. The other is item seven C, Delegate Mitchell, just to keep things in order. What we can do is we can go ahead and move the legislations before the reports. And that's how we can proceed. And then as far as the two legislations sponsored by Delegate Parish, I will say for the record that, that when a delegate can't make a Law and Order Committee meeting, usually the delegate will reach out to committee members to ask that we co-sponsor to help them move the legislations through the process. For the record, I have not received a text message from Chair Parish. Are there any committee members who have received text messages from Chair Parish asking for a co-sponsor for these two legislation? Okay. So with that, we do have Delegate Mitchell, are you done with your amendment number one? So amendment number one is to add legislation number zero two four nine dash two five, and to also move the legislations before the reports. Is that correct, Delegate Mitchell? Delegate Mitchell, committee members, how would you guys like to proceed with zero two three four dash two five and zero two three five dash two five?
We haven't heard from her or anything, so she hasn't texted anybody. And sometimes I like to leave it up to delegates to reach out to someone. They do get upset. So I think what we can do with this one is defer to the next LOC, if we can, from an order manager.
Um, yes, Delegate Arvizo, we can do that. Another suggestion is we can split up the legislations. We can keep these two legislations at the end of the agenda and give Chair Parish some time to get in. And we can call it towards the end of the agenda as well. That way, we do give her the opportunity of getting here. I'm, I'm thinking perhaps maybe she thought the LOC would start at ten. But if we keep it at the end of the agenda, then we can call it again, if, if that's fine with the delegates.
That's great.
Okay, so with that, just for the record, amendment number one is to add legislation number zero two four nine dash two five, and to move item, legislation number zero two four nine dash two five, and legislation number zero two three three dash two five before reports. Okay, Delegate Mitchell?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes.
Your amendment?
Yes.
Okay, committee members, we will go ahead and we will now, amendment number one has been made. A motion was made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell. Can I get a second? Second made by Delegate Stephen Arvizo. So committee members, we are now gonna go ahead and proceed forward with the vote unless there are some questions to this amendment. I'm not seeing any hands going up. I'm not hearing anything. So Lori, if you could assist us with roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for amendment number one. Honorable Stephen Arvizo, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arvizo, who's in favor. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr., how do you vote?
Green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr. votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell.
Over me.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, with three members in favor, zero opposed. Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, we have three members who voted in the affirmative, zero who opposed, chair not voting, one delegate who is excused. So with that amendment, number one does pass. We are now back on the main motion. Motion was made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell, second by Delegate Stephen Arvizo. Committee members, is there another amendment? Or are there any questions to the agenda at this time? May Delegate, Delegate Daniels?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't get staff. I don't know. Let me get to do consent agenda because we have a work session here. There's three legislation. Work session. But um. All these legislations, it's gonna move forward to be an F, not E, at here. I don't know, cancelled, out of capital. So. Like to make that motion to consent agenda on legislation. Two four nine. Dash twenty-five. Two three three twenty-five. Two three four twenty-five and two three five twenty-five.
So with that, committee members, we do have amendment number two that has been offered with a motion at this time, and that is a consent agenda with all of the legislations per the committee rules of order that is, that is allowed. So committee members, are there any, can I get a second to that? Second made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell. Committee members, are there any questions, any comment to the consent agenda for the legislations? Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. For the record, Lori, if you can assist us with roll call vote for amendment number two.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for amendment number two. Honorable Stephen Arvizo, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arvizo votes in favor. Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr.
I vote green.
Honorable Herman M. Daniels, you can hear votes, screen. Honorable Arvin Mitchell. Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, with three members in favor, zero opposed, with chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, three members in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, the amendment number two for consent agenda does pass. So with that, committee members, we are now back on the main motion. Main motion was made by Delegate Arvin Mitchell, second by Delegate Stephen Arvizo. Committee members, are there any questions, any comments, or any further amendments to the agenda at this time? Not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. For the record, we do have amendment number one. Lorraine, I'll just go ahead and have you go ahead and read for the record the two amendments on the agenda, and then we'll go ahead and go to roll call vote.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the Law and Order Committee. Amendment number one is adding zero two four nine dash twenty-five, which is an act relating to law and order. And the committees and Navajo Nation Council confirming the appointment of Chris Feature Esquire as the Navajo Nation Attorney General. And then the other one will be adding zero two four nine dash twenty-five. And. Zero two three three twenty-five and move that up to front, but it will be eventually be added to the agenda. By some of the first order forces as consent agenda, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, Lorraine, just very quickly, so the legislations, the new business will be at number five. And then it is a consent agenda, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so with that, committee members, are there any questions or any comments to the reading of the, the agenda into the record and the two amendments? Okay, Delegate Daniel?
Yes. Tuesday, Tuesday, we had a meeting over at the Manasama Creek, National Youth Commission. And I was approached by one of, an individual. Requested this, you know, you put on a date, maybe I'll add it to the agenda, maybe today or next week as an agenda, to go out to Reima. District. Rory at City, he's the chief of police. No, yeah, either, so. You know, add that to the agenda or next week, that's enough, you know, in your meeting.
Um, yeah, we can go ahead and we can add that to the agenda as a, as a discussion topic to allow us the opportunity to discuss what it is that we are heading to Reima for, and then we can also find a date. So, Lorraine, we do have amendment, so is that a motion for amendment number three? So we do have a motion made by Delegate Herman Daniels for amendment number three. And that is to add item eight on to the agenda, item eight being. Actually, Lorraine, do you normally put it under new business discussion topics? I'm sorry. Okay, so it would be item seven B as in boy added to discussion topics. Under new business. And that would be to discuss a visit to Reima. To meet with Rory at City. And this is just a discussion topic. Okay, is that correct, Shiyaj?
The schedule meeting, the schedule.
Yeah, visit to Reima?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and it's just a meeting, it's not a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So that would probably be a leadership meeting. Okay, so with that, committee members, we do have to add a discussion topic under new business as B. And since new business has been moved to five, for the record, five is new business. A is consent agenda with legislation number zero two three four dash two five, zero two three five dash two five, zero two three three dash two five, zero two four nine dash two five as consent agenda items. Item five B is the discussion to schedule a leadership meeting in Reima to meet with Chief Rory at City. Item six still remains new business, I'm sorry, old business. Item seven will then be receiving reports. So committee members, amendment number three. So committee members, amendment number three has been added. Can I get a second? Second made by Delegate Arbin Mitchell. Committee members, are there any questions, comments to amendment number three? Not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. Lori, can you assist us with roll call vote for item number three?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for amendment number three. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arviso is in favor. Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I will agree.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three members in favor, zero opposed with chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. So with that, committee members, uh, we do have amendment number three that has been added with the vote of three in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. We are back to the main, uh, agenda item. Uh, so again, just for the record, we have, um, changes that have been made. Uh, number one is we added zero two, four, nine, dash, two, five to the agenda. We moved for amendment number two for a consent agenda for all of the legislations for today. We have also amended the agenda to move a new business to item number five. A being the consent agenda, B being the, um, I did for the record say the discussion on the Reima. Visit, and I realized that we have item, uh, discussion to meet with the Judicial Conduct Commission, which we can go ahead and move to item five C flowing. And then we do move again at that point to item six, old business, there's none, and then item seven are the two reports that will be listed. So with that, committee members, are there any other amendments, any questions, any comments to the agenda at this time? Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. Main motion for the agenda was made by Delegate, uh, Arbin Mitchell, second by Delegate Stephen Arviso. We do have three amendments. All three have been passed, so we're going to proceed to a roll call vote. Lori, can you assist us with roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for main motion. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arviso votes in favor. Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I will agree.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three members in favor, zero opposed with chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Three members in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. We do have an agenda set before us at this time. We now proceed to item number four, review and adopt the journals. We do have three journals listed. We have journal from September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty five, September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, and October ninth, two thousand and twenty five. As this committee has done in the past and with precedence being set by this committee, uh, we can do this one of two ways. We can make a motion, a second and a vote for each of the journals. Or we can do one motion, one vote for accepting all three journals. How would the committee like to proceed? Delegate Daniels?
Yeah, motion to accept the journals, September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, September twenty second, twenty twenty five, and October nine, twenty twenty five, all three.
Thank you for that. Delegate Daniels, a motion has been made to accept all three jour- journals with one motion, one second, one vote. Committee members, can I get a second?
Thank you.
Second made by Delegate Stephen Arviso. Committee members, are there any questions? Well, before I proceed for the record, Lori, can you go ahead and let the committee? Uh, and the record know when the three journals were emailed to the committee members?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, September fifteen, twenty twenty five journal and September twenty second, twenty twenty five journal. Were sent to LOC members on Tuesday, September twenty three, twenty twenty five, at two thirty P M by myself, Lori Caldwell. And October ninth, twenty twenty five journal was sent to LOC members on Friday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty five, at nine twenty two A M by myself, Lori Caldwell, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Lori. So for the record, Lori did send us these, these, uh, journals through email. First one was sent on Tuesday, October twenty third, twenty twenty five. Was it October or September?
Uh, I'm sorry.
The September fifteenth and the September twenty second?
Okay, those were sent on Tuesday, September twenty third.
Okay, sorry, my apologies.
Two thirty P M.
September twenty third, twenty twenty five, at two thirty P M.
Yes.
And then we also have the journal dated October nine, twenty twenty five, that was sent to us on Friday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Committee members, a motion has been made, a second motion was made by Delegate Herman Daniels, second by Delegate Stephen Arviso. Again, committee members, are there any questions or any amendments that need to be made to the journals at this time? Okay, not hearing anything, not seeing any hands go up. For the record, Lori, if you can assist us with roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is roll call vote for accepting all three journal. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arviso votes in favor. Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior?
I vote green.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior votes green. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I will agree.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three members in favor, zero opposed with chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, committee members, we do have a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. All three of the journals dated September fifteenth, September twenty second, and October ninth have been accepted by the Law and Order Committee. We now move to item number five, new business. Uh, we have item A, consent agenda. Under consent agenda, we do have legislation number zero, two, three, four, dash, two, five, zero, two, three, five, dash, two, five, zero, two, three, three, dash, two, five, and zero, two, four, nine, uh, dash, two, five. Lorraine, have these legislations been read into the record?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the Law and Order. These are all read into the record.
Okay, with that, committee members, all of the legislations, um, listed under the consent agenda have been read into the record. Can I get a, uh, motion at this time? Motion made by Delegate Arbin Mitchell, can I get a second? Second made by Delegate Stephen Arviso. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to a roll call vote at this time. Lori, can you assist us with roll call vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arviso votes in favor. Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior?
In favor.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior votes favor. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I will agree.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, we have three members in favor, zero opposed with chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Okay, with that, committee members, consent agenda passes with three members in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Uh, thank you, uh, Delegate. Shana Anclaw for being here in attendance. So your two legislations does proceed to the next, uh, committee, the next, uh, committee, yes. Listed, so with that, committee members, uh, we will go ahead and proceed to item B and let the record reflect that Delegate Shana Anclaw is here present with us at the Law and Order Committee. Um, building, Delegate Claw, would you like to go ahead and introduce yourself to the committee and then also to those in attendance and then for the record?
Sure. So, yeah. Uh, Madam Chair, Charles Newton, uh, does on the Law and Order Committee. And I always like what, uh, Shana says, the most powerful committee on the Navajo Nation. So thank you for passing, uh, the legislations today through consent. I also want to acknowledge that Mr. Chris Feature is here in attendance as well. So thank you for passing legislation forward, uh, two, four, nine. And then also Mr. Byron Shorty from Navajo Telecommunications is here as well, so that's legislation zero, two, three, three. Um, I don't. Uh, she, uh, resources and development committee. Thank you, everyone, and have a good day.
Thank you for that, Delegate Claw. So with that, committee members, we now move to item five B on the agenda. And the amendment was to add a discussion topic to schedule a leadership meeting with Rory at City, the new chief of police for the Reima. Police Department. So committee members, if you guys can take out your, your calendar, so we can, uh, schedule a. Time, a leadership meeting with Mr. Rory at City. Uh, can't believe we're already going into November. Holy goodness. Okay, um, so, uh, just for the record, uh, normally we do have two members of the Law and Order, three members of the Law and Order Committee. Who do travel to the Tribal Interior Budget Council, and that was originally scheduled to be, um, next week. However, because of the government shutdown, the Tribal Interior Budget Council was postponed. Uh, so, uh, we do have a, uh, a week free next week, so just an FYI, Delegate Mitchell. Um, so when would the committee like to meet with, uh, Mr. Rory at City in Reima? I myself will be attending in Reima, a leadership meeting. Uh, we are, um, open to having that as a hybrid meeting. Um, so, uh, just keep that in mind as you look at your schedule. So are there any, uh, proposed dates? Be mindful that we have, um, November tenth, the seventeenth, and the twenty fourth scheduled for regular Law and Order Committee meeting at ten o'clock. And we also have, uh, Navi Kiyatik per the law, uh, we do have that scheduled for the second and fourth Thursday. Uh, the, the second, uh, Thursday being the thirteenth, however, the fourth Thursday is Thanksgiving, but we will leave that to Speaker, um, to reschedule. She might just call a meeting that day. I'm just kidding you guys. Delegate Mitchell, go ahead, did you?
Uh, next week I'll be, I'll be busy.
Okay.
Usually the first week I have chapter meetings, planning meetings and all that. That, um, there's a IHS. FY twenty eight budget formulation.
And what is that?
Which is also scheduled November the twelfth.
I.
Remember we have, uh, medical services.
That's right, EMS. Do you know, can you tell me what time that's scheduled? What time is that? What, what?
Uh, November the. The twelve.
Yeah, do you? Yeah, can you? Okay.
There was an email.
Okay, I'll go back into my email. I haven't checked my email for the last couple of days, so my apologies.
On the first day, the eleventh, starts in the afternoon. The second day, I'll let you hear, I'll send it to you.
Okay, okay, so we do have a few days that are, um. That are, yeah, cut off.
Then the eleventh is the holiday.
Yes, the eleventh is a holiday, it's Veterans Day. Um, Delegate Daniels, you know, what we could do is if Reima is open, uh, we could have a LOC meeting in Reima. And then we could follow up with a leadership meeting with, uh, Mr. At City.
We could do that.
Do you want to do that? Are we? Are we, um, are we open to having that meeting on the seventeenth, which will give us a few day, I mean, a few weeks to prepare? Hopefully, by that time, we'll have the whole budget crisis in, um, addressed.
Or who can do that, um, December? December?
Yeah.
I think that.
Yeah, we, we could do December as well.
December.
So if you look at December's calendar, per law, we meet the second, third, and fourth Mondays, so that would be the eighth, the fifteenth, and the twenty second. Um, any, any, um. Uh, actually, committee members, um, I know that this was not a discussion topic, and we can add it on to the next discussion topic, but we can agree right now. I know usually the week of, um, Christmas, uh, people do travel.
Yeah.
So if we go by the law and we meet the second, third, and fourth Monday of December, that would mean the twenty second we would be meeting. Um, so if the committee members are not opposed, and we can do a formal vote on the next LOC agenda, but we can go ahead and propose to meet on December first, which is the first Monday. That way, the twenty second, um, we, we won't be meeting. Are we in agreement with that, committee members?
Yes.
Okay, Lorraine, go ahead and add that to the next agenda item. Um, right now, we, we are in verbal agreement that we'll go ahead and move and have a special meeting on December, uh, first at ten o'clock A M. And this is going to be a special Law and Law and Order Committee meeting in lieu of the December twenty second meeting. And then we'll do the formal vote at, on the next Law and Order Committee, uh, at the next Law and Order Committee meeting. So with that being said, um, committee members, we do have, uh, those dates available. Uh, I, I think maybe, um. December first is going to be right after Thanksgiving, so I would propose maybe December eighth.
Yeah.
Are you guys good with December eighth? Okay, just reach out to Mr. At City and let him know, uh, that we'll go ahead and schedule a ten o'clock Law and Order Committee meeting in Reima. Um, if he has a, uh, area, it's not going to be a public hearing, it's just going to be a regular Law and Order Committee meeting. Um, and then right after the meeting is complete, then we can go ahead and schedule our leadership meeting with him.
That'll be the eighth, right?
Yes, December eighth at ten o'clock, Law and Order Committee meeting, Reima.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So you still have a meeting on the first?
Yes, so that one, we, we just now verbally decided December first, however, we've got to do an official vote on that one.
Okay.
Um, but we're going to schedule that one, so for December Law and Order Committee meeting will be December first, December eighth, and December fifteenth. Okay, committee members, so we do have a, a date and time selected for item five B. Can I get a motion and a second? Motion?
Okay.
Motion made by Delegate Herman Daniels, can I get a second? Second made by Delegate Arbin Mitchell, and this is for a vote to have the Reima meeting scheduled December eighth in Reima, New Mexico, at ten o'clock A M. Where we'll have a regular Law and Order Committee meeting. We'll wait for Mr. At City to provide us a location, but the date and time has been selected. Lori, can you assist us with roll call vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arviso votes in favor. Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior?
Wait.
Honorable Herman, you're both green. Honorable, um, Stephen Arviso?
I'm in favor.
Yeah, he, you, you called.
I'm sorry. Honorable Arvin Mitchell?
I will agree.
You're, you're, you're fine, Doc.
Madam Chair, we have three members in favor, zero opposed with chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lori. Three members in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. The date, time has been selected, uh, to meet with Rory at City with the chief of police, with Reima Police Department. So what?
That is, is from York?
Yes, he is. I, yeah, I didn't even know that he was the new chief until I was informed like two weeks ago. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, i- it's good, though, it's good. So we're going to now move to item five C, and that is a discussion on, uh, meeting with the Judicial Conduct Commission. Uh, just, uh, we'll go ahead and call a motion in a second so we can have this discussion. Uh, motion made by Delegate Arbin Mitchell?
Second.
Second made by Delegate Herman Daniels. Uh, committee members, uh, the, just, uh, a recap, the purpose of this meeting with the Judicial Conduct Commission is, uh, number one, there is a new commission. Uh, so we need to, uh, meet with them, uh, give them the opportunity to introduce themselves to the, uh, to the Law and Order Committee. Uh, the Judicial Conduct Commission is, uh, in charge at this time of, uh, making, they do the interviews for new judges, but they also handle, um, judicial conduct issues. Uh, and so the Judicial Conduct Commission during the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, uh. Justice Emeritus Robert Yasi came before the committee, the Law and Order Committee during the twenty-fourth Navajo Nation Council, made some recommendations on, uh, changes to the law. In terms of, um, the Judicial Conduct Commission's. I guess their part in the selection of, uh, judges and the interviews that they take, that, that take place. At that time, Emeritus Yasi, um, did suggest that the Judicial Conduct Commission remove themselves from that process. Um, so we started working on legislation to correct that issue, uh, but it never went anywhere with, uh, Office of Legislative Council. They never completed, uh, the, um. The request that was submitted. Um, so what I wanted, instead of re-submitting that same request, uh, I had hoped that we could meet with the Judicial Conduct Commission. To explain to them the recommendations that were made by Emeritus Yasi, and if they are in agreement, then we can go ahead and proceed. However, uh, the Judicial Conduct Commission was lacking, um, people. I guess being appointed to the commission, um, so we weren't able to meet with them, but now they do have, uh, Lorraine, how many, um? Um so we weren't able to meet with them, but now they do have, uh Lorraine, how many um members do they have on the Judicial Conduct Commission now?
I believe it was six. Let me look it up then.
I know you sent us an email of all of the names. So there are members that have been appointed to the Judicial Conduct Commission. This commission, we have made requests for them to come before this body. Um we did during Chief, the former Chief Justice Joanne James uh hearing. Uh we did get to hear um from. I want to say, was it Judy Apache was with the Judicial Conduct Commission, or was she with the Bar Association?
The Bar.
Okay, okay. We didn't hear from the Judicial Conduct Commission, did we?
No.
No, okay.
Not the new members.
Not the new members. Okay, so we haven't met any of the new members at this point, so that's the purpose of this meeting. We did invite them on two occasions. I, is it, how many occasions did we invite them, Lorraine?
Um I believe it was two.
Okay, and both times they did not appear before this committee, nor did they provide any um excuses to why they uh did not appear before this committee. We are the oversight. Uh they play an important role. The Judicial Conduct Commission is also going to be part of the uh part of the process when it comes to the new Chief Justice. Um so this committee does have to uh meet with the Judicial Conduct Commission uh to talk about um. I guess really kind of the the changes in law, uh but also the um introduction and then some ideas on how they want to proceed forward uh with the appointment or the the appointment of uh new judges. Uh committee members, um I think that. I don't really know. It's kind of hard to say what the reason is um for them not coming to the uh committee. Um but we did send them a courtesy letter. Uh Chris, was that the one that you drafted? Yes. And had, did they respond? Okay, so committee members, um if you guys are okay with it, uh we can subpoena them. Each of the members of the Judicial Conduct Commission. It is within our uh power and authority to do so. Uh Chris, uh can you cite the law that gives us that authority to do that? Yes.
Members.
Five members. Okay, can you, for the record, Lorraine, while Chris is looking that up, uh can you uh tell us who the five members are?
Thank you, uh Madam Chair and members of the Law and Order Committee. So the chairperson is Honorable Jennifer Benali. The term is from one, one twenty-twenty-five to one, one twenty-twenty-nine. Vice Chairperson is Dr. Manley Begay, term four fifteen to twenty-sixteen and four fifteen to twenty-twenty. That's the term. Then the members are Honorable Charlene Jackson, term nine twenty-seven twenty-three, four to nine twenty-seven twenty-two. Member also is Rhonda Tooney and William Battles Junior. Term from September first twenty-twenty-three to September first twenty-twenty-seven, Madam Chair. And I sent the email to you.
Thank you uh for that, Lorraine. So with that, committee members, the Judicial Conduct Commission members have been read into the record. We do have five members. Uh how many um positions are open at on the commission, Lorraine? Is it one?
I think they're all full.
Are they all filled?
Filled, yeah.
Okay, so um with that, committee members. The uh Chris, I'm gonna go ahead and turn the floor back over to you in terms of the power to subpoena. Uh can you cite the the law that gives this committee the power to do that?
Thank you. On the law is Title II, subsection one eighty-five under B. This is the committees, boards, and commissions shall apply the power to subpoena and acquire from any executive department, bureau, agency, board, commission, office, independent establishment, or instrumentality, information, suggestions, estimates, and statistics necessary for execution of the purposes and authorities.
Okay, thank you for that. So with that, uh committee members, uh we do have a you go to two Navajo Nation Code, section one eighty-five. Uh we do have under B, which was um read into the record here by our Legislative Council, I believe. So with that, committee members, uh we do have the power to subpoena. Um we have invited them. Uh they've missed two meetings so far. Uh we can, a- and we also, uh our Legislative Council also sent out a memo to them asking them to come out and the reasons for them to come and meet with Law and Order Committee. We have yet to receive a response from them. Uh Chris, for the record, when did you send that memo?
Um I sent it uh September twenty-fifth. Let me look at the data. I'm checking what emails are sent to them now.
Okay, go ahead and check your emails, because we need it uh correct for the record. Uh what day did you say, uh Delegate Bishop?
Number, number twenty-fourth of September twenty.
September twenty-fifth.
There was some correspondence.
Okay, the one that I have is September sixteenth. Wait, I have fifteenth and the sixteenth.
And the nineteenth also.
I have one for September fifteenth, O E T Judicial Conduct Commission.
Yeah, I don't have the nineteen. I only have the fifteenth on the record. So um Chris, just for the record, which do you, uh I guess, which?
September sixteenth, because it was detached, Lavon H. Wanika. Which, she's the one that responded on behalf of the Judicial Conduct Commission, stating that the ten meetings and that was the reason why I did the ten.
Okay, great. So with that, committee members, uh just for the record, our Legislative Council uh did send an email uh to Ms. Lavon Wanika. Um and the email does state, please forward this to the Navajo Nation Judicial Conduct Commission. It is a request to attend the Navajo Nation Law and Order Committee meeting on September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five at ten o'clock AM. Thank you. A memo was also attached to that uh to that email. And on that memo, uh it does provide information um as to uh a request for uh presentation by the new, by the Navajo Judicial Conduct Commission. Um so committee members, we can do this one of two ways. We can send another letter reminding them that we do have the power to subpoena them. Um or we can just go ahead and proceed forward to subpoena them. How would the committee like to proceed?
One more?
I'm fine with sending one more. Um and and again, what we can do is we can um draft another memo. And on that memo, we can uh remind them that this committee does have the power to subpoena under the Navajo Nation Code. Uh and it is stated there in black and white, and we will let them know that uh if they do not attend the next committee meeting uh that we'll go ahead and we will be subpoena, we will go ahead and exercise our subpoena power. Um so we can schedule them into December um. Perhaps. I don't know, like. I I'm thinking maybe December fifteenth, if the committee members are good with it. We know here at the LOC building, we have good um wifi reception. If we schedule, well, we could also go into November as well. If the committee is is fine with that. And then um. So if the committee is is good, we can go ahead and we can schedule them on November seventeenth, which will give them at least three weeks, maybe two and a half weeks to prepare. Are we good with that, committee members? Okay, so Chris, go ahead and draft another memo uh to the Judicial Conduct Commission. Number one, uh inviting them to November seventeenth at ten o'clock AM. Um and we'll go ahead and make the the um attendance, we'll make it a hybrid for them. Uh so it's optional. They can either appear via teleconference or through Zoom, or they can attend in person. Uh and then um have them ready to prepare a presentation on the seventeenth year previous. Uh memo outlines everything that uh we, that we want to, I guess, uh that we're reminding them that their responsibilities are. Um so let's go ahead and let's send that out, and then let's, on that same memo, remind them that this is the third attempt to get them to come before the committee. And this is their warning that um if they do not attend on November seventeenth at ten o'clock AM uh that we will go ahead and subpoena them under the powers of two Navajo Nation Code, section one eighty-five B. Okay, thank you for that, Chris. So with that, committee members, uh that item has been discussed. Uh if everybody is comfortable with that, we'll go ahead and if there's anything that needs to be added, committee members, now's the time to speak. If not, we'll go ahead and proceed forward to a roll call vote. Okay, I don't see any hands going up. I don't hear anything. Lori, if you can assist us with roll call vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable Stephen Arvista, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arvista votes in favor. Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior.
In favor.
Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior votes in favor. Honorable Arbin Mitchell.
Will bring.
Honorable Arbin Mitchell votes green. Madam Chair, red. Three members in favor, zero opposed, the chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, uh Lori. So with that, committee members, three in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Uh the discussion topic regarding the Judicial Conduct Commission um is now complete. So uh we do have a date and location, time, I'm selected. So we will now uh proceed to item six. Which is all business, there is none. Item seven, we are now at receiving reports. We do have a report that will be provided to us by uh Justice Ray Austin regarding commentary on revisions to Title Seven that are in addition to those done by the Judicial Conduct Commission dated June sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh Mr. um Austin, are you on the, on the call?
Yes, Mr. Austin is on the same call.
Okay, Mr. Austin, are you ready to proceed with your presentation?
Uh Mr. um Austin, are you on the, on the call?
Yes, I'm on here.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, Mr. Austin, for being on the call. What we're gonna do is we're gonna go ahead and at this time, call for a motion and a second. Um so that we can go ahead and proceed forward with your report. Can I get a motion at this time, committee members? Motion made by Delegate Arbin Mitchell. Can I get a second? Second made by Delegate Stephen Arvista. Um Mr. Austin, thank you for being on the call. Um I'm gonna go ahead and refer to you as um Emeritus uh Justice Austin, since you are retired. Um Emeritus Justice Austin, uh just for the record, here at the Law and Order Committee. Uh you will have twenty minutes to present your um information to this committee. Upon completion, if you are done before those twenty minutes are up, if you could just let us know so we can proceed to ask, asking questions. If you um use up your twenty minutes and you need additional time, just let us know how much more time you need. If there are no objections from the committee members, we can go ahead and proceed to give you that time. Lorraine does keep track of that time, so you'll hear her phone going off. Um she is the only person in this building, in this committee, who is allowed to have her phone on um since she does uh keep track of our timing. Uh during this time, I'd like to remind everyone to uh make sure that their devices are turned off. The only devices that should be on are those that are medical devices. Um and uh we ask that you turn off your devices so that there are no interruptions uh to the presentation or the information provided to this committee during this time. Uh Mr. Austin, uh Emeritus Austin, you can, um you can um have as many uh agents as you, as you need to help answer questions. Uh and I do believe that there are documents that have been submitted to this committee, documents that you'll be referring to, that we do have in hand. Those documents are a document that's titled Completed by Judicial Conduct Commission, June sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh we also have a document titled Submitted to Law and Order Committee on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five by email. And then we also have a document titled Judicial Conduct Commission Commentary on Recommended Revisions to Title Seventeen. Uh I'm sorry, Title Seven, dated June sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh just for the record, uh Mr. Emeritus Austin, is this um the only uh documents that uh you want to provide to this committee at this time? Emeritus Justice Austin?
Yes.
Thank you for that. So with that, committee members, um we do have a motion that was made by Delegate Arbin Mitchell, a second by Delegate Stephen Arvista. Um Mr. Austin, before I give you the floor, are there any questions regarding the procedures at this time?
Okay, thank you. Uh let me introduce myself first for the record. Uh my name is Ray Austin, retired Associate Justice of Navo Supreme Court. Uh. Yat Ehron Olsko. Uh Togia Tlini Shla. Ashne Pasas Chin. Tore Tchine Edashna Togan Lasitche. Chilchimbe Togol Yarit Nasso. Right now, I live in Tucson, Arizona. And I teach over at uh NAU. All my classes are online. Now, what I want to do is, um you were talking about Judicial Conduct Commission of Waukau. Oh, first I should let you know that I'm deaf, so I have a hard time understanding what you guys are saying. I have my little phone here sitting by the by the, uh my computer that is picking up a little bit of it, but I'm not picking up everything, so I'm gonna have a difficult time trying to answer your questions, to see what you're asking. I asked to have the uh closed captioning turn on, on the, on your Zoom equipment, but I don't see it anywhere.
Um uh uh Mr. Austin, you can just hold on really quickly. Let's verify uh for the record. Uh do we have closed caption that's available on, on Zoom?
Okay, um.
Uh uh uh. Um. Shinashin.
Do we have closed caption that's available on, on Zoom?
We have our um people working on it. If you just give us uh just a few minutes. Emeritus Austin, we'll go ahead and we'll see if we can get the closed captioning on.
This is a thought. So he's in Tucson. As I understand, he is, he has a disability, he's deaf, and he's also blind. Um which is why he couldn't be here in person. So maybe today he can give us his but what I'd like to offer at the end is maybe we can go out to Tucson and meet with him. Since this is exactly what we need to do is to talk about the laws that need to be changed for the Judicial Conduct Commission. And he is a retired um Supreme Court Justice. So maybe we can, once the whole travel issue gets discussed, travel out there to go meet with him. Sit down with him and talk more in depth about this presentation for me. Are you guys okay with that? But.
He needs to do that, the presentation.
Yeah, he's gonna talk to us. We'll give him the twenty minutes, and then when he's done, what we'll do is we'll, we'll tell him that we want to go. Yeah, he's gonna talk to us, we'll give him twenty minutes, and then when he's done, what we'll do is we'll, we'll tell him that we wanna go meet with him. We'll hold back, we'll hold back on all of our questions until then.
Because.
We can ask him. Yeah, do you guys wanna do that? Do you want him to give him twenty minutes?
Yeah, yeah, give twenty minutes, that way we know what we're going down for.
Okay, I should read that. Okay, but then we can, we can make our way down that way at your bay. Okay, I think it would be a good visit too. Hopefully we get the P. Kurt issue addressed.
Hold up the legislation.
Yeah. Okay, so I know he can turn on now.
Not one point one.
All right, okay, okay. Uh Emeritus Justice Austin.
The closed captioning has been turned on. Can you see it on your end?
Uh can, can you repeat the?
The closed caption has been turned on. Can you see it on your end?
I'm not picking you up on my phone here. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm looking at my phone. I'm not picking up anything on my phone here. I, what, what I can do is I can give you the report right now.
Okay, just give us the report and then we won't ask any questions. What we'll do, Emeritus Justice Austin, is the committee, uh while we were trying to figure this out with the closed captioning, what we want to do is we're gonna give you twenty minutes a day to present your information. And then we're not gonna ask any questions. And we wanna schedule a visit to the University of Arizona to sit down with you to talk about this presentation more in depth. That way, we don't run into any issues with closed captioning or with you not being able to hear us.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you at this time.
Uh yes, you can come around to Tucson anytime. Um but I don't, I don't work with the University of Arizona. I'm at NAU, but all my class online.
NAU, but we'll come to you.
Yeah, well, if you come to Tucson, uh the committee comes to Tucson, we can find a meeting space somewhere, if that's possible. Or else what we can do is um, you know, if you wanna meet with the Judicial Conduct Commission as, as a whole, the President Committee, maybe we can schedule a meeting at NAU at one of the conference rooms, and then all of you can come over there, meet with the Judicial Conduct Commission, then I can go up to Flagstaff and we can all meet.
That sounds good. We can definitely do that, but we'll go ahead and give you some time now to, to start the presentation. We'll give you twenty minutes.
Okay, I'll start now.
Go ahead.
Okay. I served on the commission for four years, my term ended uh last year. And during the time that I was on a commission, uh there were numerous uh reports that were sent to us about the problems the Navajo Nation Courts were experiencing. And so, but we, so what we did, what we did as a committee is um, we talked about the problems, some of them came in in paper, paper form, and then also had some lawyers that sent me emails about some of the problems that were going on with the court system. And so we had meetings and we talked about that. And we've decided that one of the best ways to deal with these issues was to make revisions to Title Seven. Uh we know it on, many of these laws on Title Seven were done, they were passed in nineteen eighty-five. And then there are a few revisions that were made in two thousand and three. And since that time, there really has been no updates to Title Seven. So what you see in Title Seven right now are really, really outdated. They're almost probably nearly forty years old. And so what we should be doing and what they called, the commission decided to do was assess the Navajo Nation with updating some of these laws, at least those that dealt with the issues that the Navajo Nation Courts were experiencing right now. And so what we did is we met several times, the Judicial Conduct Commission usually meets on weekends, on a Saturday. So we met several times and we looked at the laws that we thought needed to be changed, clarified and all that. So we picked certain ones. And one of the, one of the laws that really needed some updating was the one about a Navajo language requirement. Uh one of the qualifications set out uh in Title Seven that deals with a Navajo language requirement. We've had people, but I should tell you right now, there are at least eight positions that are vacant for district court judge. And then there's a position that is vacant for Associate Justice, and now we have a Chief Justice position that is vacant. So you see what is going on. We have a lot of vacancies on the bench. And what that does is it interferes with case processing. It takes a long time to decide these cases when you have these vacancies and when you don't have enough judges sitting on the bench. And also what it does is, the more you delay decision making, then you're violating the rights of the parties under Navajo Bill of Rights and also under the Indian Civil Rights Act. And so what we need to do is we need to put those judges on the bench. And so that's one of the issues that came up several times. And so what we did is we looked at certain laws and then we made revisions to them, and we did this over a number of meetings. And then we came up with a final document that we all agreed on, and then we sent that to the Law and Order Committee. I think it was back in twenty twenty-four, somewhere there. And then my term expired after that, so the, the new members uh were on board and they already have copies of these documents also. And then after that, then what I did is when the issue about the Chief Justice Jane came up, then there was some confusion on what powers the Law and Order Committee had and also what powers the uh President of Navajo Nation had. Uh and so what I did is I looked at some of these laws again, and then I made additional revisions that should clarify the issues that came up with uh Chief Justice Jane. And so those laws, I made revisions to that, and then I, I drafted those up and also sent those to the Law and Order Committee. And so you should have all those documents before you, and a lot of them are basically self-explanatory. And so what I'll do is I'll just hit some of the major ones here. Uh you can look at Section two oh four D, and this is Title Seven, and this is a law that allows the Navajo Court Judges to use the laws of the three states in which the Navajo Nation is located. So that means that they can use the laws of Utah, Arizona, and New Mexico, and possibly also Colorado. And so what that does is when you have a law like that, then you're not using Navajo reasoning, Navajo thinking, you're relying on outside reasoning, outside thinking to decide your issues, and we shouldn't do that. What we should keep in mind is we're a sovereign nation, and it's our own reasoning and all that that should determine uh how we deal with issues, that should also determine how we deal with uh the concept of self-determination, how we understand sovereignty and all of that. So we shouldn't rely, be relying on, on what the Balagana say in other state courts. So that's the reason why we changed Section two oh four. Uh we made the, what we used to be the requirement for use of state law. We turned that into guidance so that, you know, that the judge can look at whatever the state law is that is argued. And then the judge can think through that and use Navajo reasoning to come out with law, develop, develop law. So that's what that does. And we also put in there uh a section on international instruments, the Native Nations Declaration on the rights of indigenous peoples and also the American Declaration. If you know anything about international law, the international forums are now using the declarations to decide issues involving indigenous peoples in other parts of the world. And we also have a Navajo Nation Human Rights Office that also promotes international instruments. So that's the reason why we put that in there. Some of our judges can read some of those decisions and see how international forms apply native customer law, indigenous customer law to decide cases. So that's why we, why we put that in there, Section two oh four D. The next part uh is uh Section three five two, and uh that deals with subsections A, B, and C. And what this does is this gets, gives the Law and Order Committee uh the power to remove a permanent Chief Justice, permanent Associate Justice, or permanent District Court Judge. And there are reasons stated in those subsections that the Law and Order Committee can use as justification for coming up with a removal resolution. And then uh the Law and Order Committee's recommendation for removal of a permanent judge or justice goes to the full membership of the Navajo Nation Council. And of course, the judge, when he appears before the council in these removal proceedings, has a right to be represented by an attorney and also has a right to present a defense before the council. The council then takes a vote and, and uh can remove a justice or judge by two-thirds vote of the full membership, meaning two-thirds of twenty-four. We have twenty-four members on the council. So that's what that deals with. And then Section three five two D deals with uh where a judge commits a felony, either in state court, federal court, or one that is classified as a felony in a Navajo Nation, in a, a native nation court, then that can be used to remove the judge also, and that's what three five two D does. And then we can move on to Section three five three, the, the section that deals with retirement. And so what, what the first section does is three five three C two is um a judge who has met the number of years for retirement and all that, has met all their qual, all their uh factors that allow that judge to retire. If that judge has met all of those, then the judge can still retire even after being removed, can, should be still entitled to retirement benefits even after removal. So that's what the, uh Section three five three C two does. And then Section three five three D four, uh we eliminated that uh eliminated that entire subsection, because what we need is we need our judges to assist our current judges with training and also court staff. We have our retired judges who are really experienced on court procedures, on uh ethics and all that, and they can use that to train the current sitting judges. So that's the reason why we eliminated uh Section three five three D four. And then uh Section three five three E three deals with um a judge uh who is uh re-employed by the Navajo Nation. And uh under this section, a judge who has retired and is re-employed by Navajo Nation should not be getting retirement benefits. The old law says that. So basically, what this does is we just basically clarify that. And so we made an exception to those, to the Section three five three, the old law, we made an exception to that. So a judge who has been appointed, judge pro tempore, or who has volunteered his services, of course, or has been appointed to the Judicial Conduct Commission, or has been uh hired as consultant to research the operations of Navajo Courts and all that. Those type of people can still earn their retirement benefits. So that's what that section does. Then uh Section three five three E five, uh the revisions there allow a retired judge to return to law practice. Uh state and federal judges who retire usually go back to law practice. They join a law firm or else they, they open their own law offices. And so this is what that section does, but it gives the Navajo judge who has retired five years, uh you can't practice law in Navajo Nation for five years, and after that, you can practice law again. But uh you have to be aware of your ethical responsibilities and all that conflicts of interest and all that. So that's what that section does. And then uh uh Section three five three F one, two, three, and four. Uh this is, this one deals with qualifications of judges. And here, the only one I'm on talk about is the uh, the language requirement. And so what this section does is, one, you should understand that it does not eliminate the language requirement. What it does is it modifies it. And so what? Wait a minute, I'm on the wrong one here. Okay, Section three five three F one, two, three, and four. That section allows the Chief Justice of the Navajo Nation to appoint temporary judges to help relieve the caseloads. And so that, the uh Chief Justice can uh appoint a retired District Court Judge or retired uh Supreme Court Judge to help relieve the caseload, and that's what that does. And then um, but the um the temporary judge has to work um pursuant to uh like a consulting contract. And so the Chief Justice and the retired judge will make an agreement, come out with a contract, and that contract will determine how the retired judge that is called back to the bench will provide the services. So that's what that does. And one thing is anytime, any kind of judge is retired judge is called back to service, that retired judge is not considered a Navajo Nation employee and is not entitled to benefits that Navajo Nation employees get. So that's what that deals with. And then uh we can go to Section three five four A five, and this is under the qualifications uh law. And what that does is, we'll only talk about a Navajo language requirement here. We had a very difficult time when I was on the commission, trying to get judges on the bench. We had people who applied, who are law school graduates, and some of them were members of state bars. But the thing is, they could not speak Navajo, and they did not understand Navajo. So immediately, under the law, they had to be uh eliminated. They couldn't proceed any further. And that presented big problems for the Navajo Courts, and that's where all the vacancies come in. And so what we did is, under the revisions, we modified the language requirement. We did not eliminate the language requirement, we modified it. And so what it does is now someone who speaks Navajo and, and an applicant who speaks Navajo can get additional points for that skill or that language that the person speaks and understands, so they can get additional points when the uh Judicial Conduct, Conduct Commission is evaluating qualifications. So that's what that does. And we also made a recommendation to the Law and Order Committee some time back that um, the Chief Justice should work with um our two universities, the NAC College and Navajo Tech, because they have Navajo language programs, and uh make out some kind of arrangements so that uh our current sitting judges can take classes at either like NAC College or, or Navajo Tech, and so they can improve their language speaking skills and learning skills and all that. So that's what that section does. And then Section three five five uh deals with um removal of a probationary Chief Justice, Associate Justice, or District Court Judge. And so what this does is, the Law and Order Committee has the power to remove a probationary Chief Justice, probationary Associate Justice, or probationary District Court Judge. All the uh Law and Order Committee has to do is draft a resident. All the Law and Order Committee has to do is draft a resolution removing that person from office. And that resolution is final. That there is no further action that needs to be taken. The president doesn't have any role in that. And so that's what that section does. And then section three five five E. Deals with. Probationary judges who have completed their terms, probationary term. And recommendations for permanent appointment under subsection E one. What we did is. Okay, what, what that subsection does is. A probationary Chief Justice, Associate Justice, or District Court Judge. Who has been denied a recommendation for permanent appointment is immediately removed from office. That's what that section does. And there is no further requirement, there is no, no further official action is needed to remove that judge. The judge has a vacate office. And then the subsection E two deals with presidential appointments. What it does is. It says that the president can only appoint to the bench. A probation, an applicant who has been recommended for appointment by the Law and Order Committee. Of course, this will affect how the Chief Justice, how we deal with a Chief Justice issue at this point. Because the Law and Order Committee will receive the applications. They will look through their applications and then drop people that don't meet the qualifications immediately. And then they'll go to the second step. That's where they do interviewing and all that. They're writing tests and all that, and then they award points. According to what is submitted to them. And then they'll come up with a list of names. And these lists of names, maybe it might be three, three names, and they'll send those names to, to the Law and Order Committee. Panel of names, and then the Law and Order Committee will look at them. Come up with a resolution and send those names to the President of Navajo Nation. Then the president will select one person from there and appoint that person as a probationary Chief Justice. And also Associate Justice or District Court Judge, whichever vacancy they're dealing with. So that's what that section does. It says the president cannot go outside the list of those names. It must work with only those names that are submitted by the Law and Order Committee to him or her. So that's what that section subsection does. And then subsection E three says that. Says that the Navajo Nation Council basically has final authority. On a permanent appointment of judges to the bench, probationary judges and permanent. Judges who are up for permanent positions. And so that's what E three does. And the council vote is by majority vote. Section three five five F. Also applies, applies to what happened with the last Chief Justice. And this, what this subsection does is it clarifies the law. If I, if a Chief Justice, if a Chief Justice is removed. Then there's a vacancy. The question is, who should appoint? A probationary, I mean, I mean, who should appoint a temporary Chief Justice? And so what the subsection does is it gives the Law and Order Committee the authority to appoint a temporary Chief Justice. But that's up to you. Maybe you want to leave it up to the President of the Navajo Nation to appoint that temporary Chief Justice. So that is one you probably have to talk about, see how that would work. And then section three five six A. Talks about a probationary. Chief Justice, Associate Justice, or District Court Judge who has. Finished the two-year probationary term. What we need to do and make sure that we do this is that when a judge has finished his or her temporary. I mean, probationary term, then that person should immediately be evaluated. And either be recommended for permanent appointment or denied permanent appointment. We don't want these, these. Positions where a probationary judge is, is. Sitting there for years and years, like what happened with the last Chief Justice. We want to make sure that these appointments are made quickly so that, you know. So that all delays are eliminated. That's really what that does. And also, we should not let someone who is a probation, on probationary status, to continue to probationary status. To learn how to do judging or else to do, learn how to do administration, all that stuff. And what we need to do is, we need to understand how these people apply for these positions. They are telling us that they are already qualified to do these things. So we shouldn't give them additional time to learn how to be a judge and all of that. So we need to make sure that these judges are appointed to the bench quickly. So those are the major revisions in Title VII. There are more. But you have the documents before you, and you can look at them. A lot of them are basically just self-explanatory. The only other one I'm on talk about is the one that deals with the composition of the Judicial Conduct Commission, which is section four, two, three, A one. The current law allows a retired federal or state judge. Or a sitting federal or state judge to serve on the Navajo Judicial Conduct Commission. So we eliminated. That, that part of the law. And so what we replaced it with is we said. You know, state judges or federal judges, they really don't know much about. A Navajo court system or even native nation court systems. So we need to have people on there who know. About native nation court systems. So we said the best people to appoint would be someone who serves as a. Tribal Court Judge from another tribe, or else if we can't find one. Then we should also look at some of our retired judges to also serve on the Judicial Conduct Commission. So that's what that section does. And there are other revisions that we made. And subchapter eleven deal with the Judicial Conduct Commission, but you should have all of that before you. Okay, so that is all.
Thank you, Emeritus Justice Austin, for presenting this information. What we'll do here at the Law and Order Committee is we'll review these recommendations. Our legislative council has a copy. We can go ahead and start working to draft that into a legislation. And then what we'll do is we will schedule a meeting with you. Whichever, whatever is easiest for you, Emeritus Justice Austin. If you want us to go meet you in Tucson where you live, we can do that. Or we can go to NAU and meet you there as well. Whichever is easiest for you, but we'd like to have further discussions on this topic. So what would be easiest for you?
Yes, we can do that. And I think the best way to do it is also to invite the Judicial Conduct Commission. The present committee, the present people who are in the committee, they might have some, some. Suggestions or comments that they want to make. I think we probably best place to do this would be maybe at Twin Arrows or somewhere in Flagstaff. I can go up to Flagstaff and. Or the Judicial Conduct Commission is scattered all over. So they have a difficult time trying to meet in one place, and that's why we, we were using Zoom for our meetings.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll schedule a meeting. We'll keep you updated on what we decide. And then we'll go ahead and we will work around your schedule. Okay, with that, committee members, there was a report provided to us here today by Emeritus Justice Austin. The report was regarding Title VII. And the revisions to the Judicial Conduct Commission. I was reading through it. Some of them are really, really good ideas. So what we'll do is, a motion was called by Delegate Arvin Mitchell, seconded by Delegate Stephen Arviso. What we'll do is we'll go ahead and vote on this report. And then we'll work with, with Emeritus Justice Austin. On scheduling a separate meeting. Hopefully by that part, we'll have met with the Judicial Conduct Commission. So we'll go ahead and we'll just add that on a discussion topic. Lorraine, let's go ahead and add it on the agenda for November seventeenth. Because that's when we said Judicial Conduct Commission will be here, right? So let's go ahead and then we can talk about it with JCC at that time as well. And this is a discussion on. An Emeritus Justice Austin's suggestions for amending Title VII. On November seventeenth with the Judicial Conduct Commission. Okay, with that, committee members, let's go ahead and go to a vote to accept this report. Lori, can you assist this with roll call vote, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
I am in favor.
Honorable Stephen Arviso votes in favor. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr. Honorable Herman and Daniels Jr. Vote screen. Honorable Arvin Mitchell.
I agree.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell vote screen. Madam Chair, with three members in favor, zero opposed, but chair not voting. Madam Chair.
Thank you for that. Three members in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting. Committee members, we do hereby accept this report. Emeritus Justice Austin, we appreciate your time. The committee has accepted your report. And we will be working with you to schedule a meeting with the Judicial Conduct Commission. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Lorraine, Lori, if you guys can go ahead and collect these items. Go ahead and put them in a binder for the committee members. That way you don't have to reprint them again. And let's go ahead and let's keep them until our November seventeenth meeting. Committee members, are we good with that? Always on top of it. First one here, all these ready to get things moving. Delegate Mitchell?
Before we get off the topic here, I forgot to bring this up. I know that there's a lot of thing you back with folks on it. I remember being on our PAC committee. That was one discussion that we had. So moving forward, I guess we need to keep retirement, maybe in Duluth. Bringing retirement.
So one of the recommendations that I did make to Retirement Committee during the ARPAC meeting. Two years ago in New York, myself and Delegate Nota were out there because we were advocating for the retirement changes for the, the judges. What we recommended was. The, because what they basically told us at that time is you cannot bring back a retired person to work. It affects your retirement. So we asked, can we hire on retired judges as consultants? Who could assist the courts? And they said, at that time, they said yes. So we asked them, how can we change the laws? Where, like it doesn't affect their retirement, but they can come back. And so they were supposed to look into that. So I agree, Delegate Mitchell, thank you for bringing that up. We'll definitely have to bring retirement into this. Lorraine, can we, during that time on November seventeenth, make sure retirement is listening in? So that they're aware of some of these suggested changes. That we're going to be discussing when we schedule that meeting, either at NAU or in Tucson. Okay, so committee members, again, we did go ahead and we voted on this. We accepted it. So we are now going to move forward if there's no other suggestions. Okay, we do have Lieutenant Sanisha who is here with us patiently waiting. Lieutenant, you can come on up to the table over here. We are now on item seven B. Which is a, is it seven B? Yes, which is a report from Division of Public Safety. On the Northern Navajo Fair as well as the Western Navajo Fair. I'm going to have a seat. Committee members, can I get a motion in a second? Motion made by Delegate Herman Daniels. Second made by Delegate Stephen Arviso, Lieutenant Sanisha. So number one, just know that this committee, we tend to give, we tend to give promotions here. With, without pay. So we'll debut, I think you presented to this committee before, but just as a reminder, you have twenty minutes to present your information. Thank you for giving us a copy of the reports. We'll go ahead. A motion has been called in a second. So we'll go ahead and we'll turn the floor over to you at this time for your report.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Shirley Samisha. Please look to the double please. I do appreciate your time this morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. And the members of the Law and Order Committee. Thank you, I do appreciate. So I have given you copies of the actual officers that got assigned to the Northern Navajo Fair. You can see that it says. I didn't make.
Oh, Lorraine, can we get some copies? Do you have it through email?
Can you just make a copy? I have an extra one.
So just that one needs a copy? How long is it going to take for you to get to make the copies, Lori?
Less than five minutes.
Okay. Do you, do you guys want us to proceed with the report? Okay, okay, go ahead. Okay. And then she'll get us the copies.
Okay, so you'll see that it says seventy Navajo Police Personnel. That consists of thirteen police sergeants, thirty-seven police officers, seven police recruits, seven dispatchers. Six administrative support staff. This also, this is a report that you're also getting, also includes our own district in Shiprock. Six with sixteen district officers, four district dispatchers, seven detention officers. So during this operation, it started from October second and ended to October fifth. To do a prevention of calls for service, we started our operations on Monday. In Shiprock with the sixteen officers. Mind you, we do have twenty officers assigned in Shiprock. But four of them are assigned in special areas like K nine. The academy headquarters and the school liaison officer. So during this time, you'll see the, the second sheet in the back with the calls of service. Which, for that duration, you'll see the high number of one thousand seventy-two. This even includes the officers checking the roadways, walking around, doing road checks, coming on duty. And making sure that they're accountable in this area. And then you'll see a sheet that says arrests. This is the number of arrests that occurred from October second to October fifth. You'll see that it says eighty-five. The majority of them is public intoxication, which is high at thirty-six. And then we have criminal nuisance at four. We have sixty UIs. And then sometimes there's a glitch when a person calls in saying that they need a. Security check at a certain area of the business. The officer responds, and that's where you'll see extra detour welfare check. They'll go over there and they'll come upon an intoxicated person or a person that might have been causing a nuisance. So it follows under that category. And then just officers doing security check. You have your traffic stops. Your traffic stops relating from either them having. Drugs on them during that traffic stop. That's where the arrests come in that. Then you have your damaged property, your nuisance. Then you have your damaged property, your nuisance, your banishing, and even the flight form police officers. Your vehicle crashes. So in all, on the fairgrounds, this is only information on the fairgrounds. We had traffic collisions that was handled by us and there were seven of them. And then medical calls in the same area was two. Your traffic citations in this area was fifty-two. You had one DUI arrest in that area, one bench warrant. But the majority of the arrests that was made on the fairgrounds is thirty. And then overall, we didn't really have any critical major incidents during this fair. There was several reports of individuals carrying firearms on the fairgrounds. Officers responded and there was none, no one found in that area. But we did have two incidents involving sworn personnel. One sergeant sustained an ankle injury from a domestic violence incident. And then one sergeant, the assigned unit was damaged by an individual on the fairgrounds, which is on the front windshield of that unit. So we're going to make a couple of recommendations in the future. And that's just to improve that area that we have designated officers for that area. And then even on during the parade, that as well. We saw issues with that. Each year, we continue to improve the parade for safety mechanisms. So we embed a lot of safety mechanisms, even working with the freight coordinator. She was pretty well. I know it was her first year. So we kind of tackled it together. So it went a lot better this year. So we're going to see how we can improve that. The only fault that I think we did with the parade was there was not enough portable rooms. And then even with the portable lighting for the pedestrians, we actually had to have a sponsor come in and provide that for us. Whereas the Fair Board, the only thing they provided, I think you, the budget for that one? Madam Chair, but they provided lodging cost of eleven thousand fifty-five dollars.
You said that to me?
Yes. And then our department actually paid three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight out of our budget. So in total, the lodging was fourteen thousand five hundred and ninety-three. And then our meals at Natantinas Kentucky Fried Chicken Subway, that's Burger and Bash's, was seven thousand six hundred and twenty-three. And then our mileage for that duration for the assigned units, for the five days at forty-four cents was two thousand four hundred and fifty-two. And then we're estimating the overtime for all the personnel that were assigned at fifty-eight, fifty-eight thousand and eighty-seven. In total, we're looking at eighty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four that cost us for this fair. And we always try to present this to the Fair Board, but the Fair Board will only pay for lodging and meals sometimes, but we actually kind of saved a little bit more than last year. Last year, just the meals alone was twelve thousand eight hundred and sixteen. And that's only because of the added personnel that Department of Emergency Management brought in along with a lot more people.
Just, I'm sorry, Sinisha, I sent that, that budget breakdown to all of you via email. So you guys should have it in your email. Lorraine, Lori, I'll just send it to you as well.
And then on our, you won't see the, but we'll add that on here. We actually had two different sponsors from two different companies that provided over two thousand dollars worth of snacks to us to push out to everyone during this timeframe. Yeah. So it's just about being transparent with the community and our sponsors of where we're at with our budget and how they can help us to better improve the Northern Navajo Fair.
Is that completely the presentation at this time?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to go ahead and print out five copies of the budget. That's a lot of money, committee members. So just really quickly, while I'm getting the, the handouts, can you tell us, like, does that come out of PD budget? And is that like part of the unmet needs order?
That, that is coming out of our department budget. But for this year, it seems like all the budgets come out of one account. So we just need to get a hold of it. But I think everybody doesn't understand how much it costs us when you bring people in to do overtime. And then the lodging.
So it comes out of Shiprock District budget?
Some of that will, and then some of them will actually come out of the headquarters budget, which has a hold of all of them together.
So just FYI, committee members, so Delegate Clotty was going back into FY twenty-six budget. And as we are all well, well aware, Boo did take some money from Public Safety to put into his own, had his own budget, but they took actually a lot out of Shiprock District.
Yeah, we only have less than a hundred ninety-five thousand.
And it's just thickening. But let's go ahead and committee members, take a look at the budget. And technically LOC was supposed to help with some of this, with the food. We helped with Navajo Nation Fair, but this was around the time that our line item veto happened. So we didn't have any money. So our apologies for that. We didn't help with Shiprock and we didn't help with Tubus City, even though we were planning that to help, you know, with at least one of the meals. But committee members, the report has been provided to us here at this time by Lieutenant Sinisha from the Shiprock District. Do you have a breakdown for the Tubus City one?
No, I don't.
Okay, who would be in charge of it? David Butler. Lori, let's, Lorraine, let's see if we can get a hold of David Butler from Tubus City PD. Let's go ahead and have him send us the information breakdown, the report. He's not here today.
He's online.
Oh, he's online?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Butler, are you, can you hear me?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, I can hear you.
Okay, great. Before I get to you, I'm going to ask the committee members, are there any questions for Lieutenant Sinisha, Delegate Mitchell?
Uh, thank you. Thank you for the reports. I know that some folks were saying, what are you listening to for, for, for activities after one day still, I don't know. To me, this is a, a way to use your data on what's needed next year. Just looking at Shiprock, there's a lot of public intoxication. Although, you know, it's just to prepare upcoming, but back to the budget personnel. Maybe you can look into the vacant six thirty-eight to pay off the overtime. I think we did that at one time. We did that at one time. That way it doesn't come out of the current budget. We can use your vacant positions. I know that there's about two hundred vacant positions, then the six thirty-eight. That would just be a recommendation and, you know. I guess PD needs to work on Wonder Rock too. I think Shiprock the biggest, the biggest fair within the Navajo Nation. And the other one, or folks that are listening online, we had probably thirty-seven police officers and then you, you add everybody. There's like sixty, sixty personnel, fifty to sixty personnel that were using to go out to the fair. But we're using a lot of other agency personnel. So you know, that's where there might be an incident of another agency, but that police officer is over in Shiprock. So I guess this is where planning comes in. Is that, you know, we don't want to have Chinley Agency not being covered and all that. So, you know, it does take a lot to run a fair, a safe fair.
Yeah.
A safe fair is what we want. And, you know, this is where you come in. Thank you.
Delegate Mitchell, just really quickly, and committee members. So for the overtime pay for law enforcement, police officers, which include police officers, K-9, traffic rangers, that was seventy staff plus ten hours is seventy hours. So at that, I think that's wrong, Lieutenant Sinisha, because if you got seventy staff, then is it each staff that had ten hours overtime?
Only the ten year.
So that, wouldn't that be seven hundred?
Hours, yeah, seven hundred hours.
Yeah.
Wow, that's a lot of hours. So, so, so then that actually is more than the fifty-four thousand, is that right? So that one would need to be corrected. Does that make sense, committee members? So seventy staff, so it should be seventy staff times the additional ten hours. So that's seven hundred hours, not seventy hours, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just correction on that. Seven hundred hours is what we're looking at for overtime. And this is just for law enforcement. I didn't do civilians because I think the civilians, it would depend on the civilian position and whether they're covered under six thirty-eight. So I think dispatch is covered under six thirty-eight, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Civilian.
Yeah, so admin is not, right?
No, they're under general fund.
So I think this part here, Lieutenant Sinisha, can you fix this part here for us?
Okay.
So we have a better understanding, or correct it, I should say. So we have a better understanding of what the actual number is. And then that way, I think what Delegate Mitchell stated, we can certainly look into that. But I'm wondering, Delegate Mitchell, maybe this is something that you want to drop legislation for, is to make it across the board that, that any vacant positions under the six thirty-eight, those funds should be, like, we should utilize that for these fair activities, like the, the overtime. And then that way, it pretty much covers from that point, you know, we don't, every year, we don't have to revisit it. And then they'll know already that they can use from those funds because technically BIA said that money does belong to us. Then that way, hopefully, unless we get stubbornness from OMB again, they'll be able to abide by that legislation that says that they have to take from the six thirty-eight first before they get into their general funds. Delegate Mitchell?
That would be part of our negotiation with BIA, since our document went over. Well, the control and then also the CI.
So technically BI, BIA, back when Delmar was the director. So myself, Delmar and Delegate Vince James, we traveled out to DC. We sat down with BIA. At that time, we were asking to use the vacancy money for bonuses, because I don't know if you remember, guys, like a few years ago, they were offering bonuses to law enforcement because they were trying to get those numbers up. At that time, what BIA said was, when we give you guys the money, if it's for personnel and you guys want to do bonuses and it's for personnel, you don't need our permission. It's your money. But what, it was OMB that said, no, we need a memo from BIA. So it took a few months, but BIA eventually came back and said, we gave you guys the money. It's in your, your account. As long as it's with personnel and the scope of work says that money would be used for personnel and it's being used for overtime, then it's allowed. So we, what we can do is we can pass or work on that legislation, Delegate Mitchell. I'm sure you want to sponsor that legislation. We can work on that legislation and then we can take it to BIA to see if they have any issues with it. And then get it passed. And that way it takes care of them for the fairs or any special event. And then that way you guys don't have to take it out of your district money. It gets automatically covered under six thirty-eight. So Delegate, I'll leave Delegate Mitchell to lead the efforts on that and to make those changes. Delegate Mitchell will drop legislation on that. And then as a committee, we could have more discussion. Then that will at least help with, with that part of it. The overtime pay for your regular employees, once we get that information, what we can do is we can share this. I'll do a report to Budget and Finance to let them know, like, cost-wise, this is what we're looking at. And then Delegate Mitchell will be dropping legislation to address the overtime pay. But to give them an idea of what we're, what, you know, what is being looked at in terms of what it's costing for. This is just one fair. So that number eighty-two thousand might be wrong. That's what I'm guessing. I'm guessing it's going to be a lot more than that. But this is giving us this good start off point to show Budget and Finance that, you know, when you guys are asking for unmet needs, that this is where it's going. And Lieutenant Sinisha, I know that Shiprock, that money was taken from Shiprock PD. So if you want to drop unmet needs, let me know. I'll drop that legislation. And so that we can fund your district back. And I'm not sure if you guys have looked at your, if Eastern, you guys have looked at your Crown Point District, Delegate Mitchell, I think you guys are under, is it Wonder Rock, Delegate Mitchell?
Yeah.
Hey, you might want to look at that and see Delegate Daniels, your Kienta, Kienta area, and also part of Tubus City to see. I think maybe we should just come back and look at those to see. And maybe just sponsor one legislation for unmet needs for PD, for CI, for EMS, to make sure that they are fully funded. So we'll go ahead and we'll start working on that to help you guys out, to get you guys back up to where you guys are at.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, yes, go ahead, please. Yes, please.
Question. A lot of the officers that come from the other districts, they're on their day off when they come to Shiprock. So when they're saving them, they're sending them when they're on their day off. And that's the same for Crown Point. We're doing some Crown Point and Chinley, we're actually able to send the, the people on their day off. And then we try to do that with the other fairs like Wonder Rock and Tuba. We send people on their day off to work the fairs. So that's the reason why we want to make sure that the districts are taking care and not everybody's over there.
And people get mad, say that officers are not doing their job. Well, it sounds like you guys are doing a lot more. So thank you for, for, for all the extra work you guys are doing on behalf of people, just so we can have our fair.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Lieutenant Sinisha. So we're, committee members, are there any other questions for Lieutenant Sinisha? We're going to send her home so she can get back out onto the road. I will go ahead and we'll allow Tubus City to present their information. Thank you, Lieutenant Sinisha. You be safe out there. I will be in contact about your unmet needs and we'll be working with Director Henderson on these unmet needs for our PD.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
And this might be something, I, I have a share at Northern Agents, but when you guys get yours for Western, we can share that. She has with Western. Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and turn the floor over now to Tubus City. PD?
Um, yes. Hi, good morning, Law Order Committee. David Butler, I'm the lieutenant here for the Tubus City Police Department. And for our Western Navajo Fair, we begin our, the fair started on the sixteenth of October, which is Thursday. So we kicked off on Kids' Day, Elderly Day. And we had our officers, I have thirteen officers here in the Tubus City District. We had them all starting special assignment, starting Thursday at midnight. Two shifts running for twelve hours, so twelve hours. And then twelve hours to another, so all four shifts that we have, two shifts working at a time. And that was on Thursday. Our assignment for the fair operations didn't start until Friday after three PM, because we had our fair briefing at one PM on Friday, which is when we had the personnel from other districts coming in. So pretty much throughout the week, it was just our local officers responding to the calls and until Thursday, we started beefing up the shifts and putting them on twelve hours. They were on twelve hours, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And Sunday. And. For them, for the local officers here, they, their overtime right now is about ten thousand. Because a lot of them, you know, they were, some of them work on Saturdays, but. So their overtime would be like a four hours on each day. So some who had to work during the weekend, a regular eight hour shift, they submitted to four hours. So a lot of our overtime from our district, it comes out of the external K account. Which the other districts submit, when they go back to their districts, they submit their overtime at their district. So an accurate count of, you know, how much it costs. Is, you know, it, it, each district would have that, because they submit it to their districts and get signed and then submit to. Headquarters for final signature by the Chief of Police. And then it comes out of the external K account. For our general funds, we pay, out of our general funds, the overtime for our civilian personnel. Them too, they were on assignment for the weekend, helping out with logistics and administrative. Support along with our dispatchers and property clerk. Records clerk, our administrative assistants, O S. We did get support from Kieta Administration. So they sent their property clerk and then their. What I think believe their office specialist to come and help, which was really helpful for us throughout the weekend. We got a budget from. Our, the, this is a chapter of twelve thousand for food and lodging. So we didn't go over that. We're able to stay under that, just because we started our operations on Friday afternoon. So everybody was coming in Friday and they pretty much spent Friday night or Saturday night, just two nights of lodging. We do, we did get a lot of support from our local. Businesses like for Friday. Our local towing company, Barlow Towing, provided. The, the luncheon for the briefing for, and, and this briefing is all of public safety. So our fire was there, EMS was there, Department of Corrections, Criminal Investigations. Everybody who was involved in public safety and involved at the fair operations were at the briefing. And they were fed there. We had our. Other meals like at one of our local restaurant, Hogon Restaurant. And then Kentucky Fried Chicken, which was, you know, that was Friday, Saturday and Sunday. So if anybody didn't get fed during the briefing, you know, they would have that. Opportunity to go to Hogon or K F C. So we did had our briefing and at, at our briefing on Friday. One of our, the grand marshals that we had, his Lieutenant George Silversmith, a former police officer. So on Friday during our briefing. We had him attend the briefing and he was given the Medal of Valor. The Navajo Police Department Medal of Valor for an incident that happened back in nineteen seventy five. November seventeen nineteen seventy five. He was, he was a, it was a police officer back then. So he was involved in an officer involved shooting here in Tubus City. Where former police officer Burton Bege lost his life. And there's a monument here that we have by the elementary school. Here in Tubus City. So there's a monument that they put up right by the school. He was the officer who was able to. Shoot the suspect and then take him into custody. At that time. So back then, I, I, I don't know what the intentions were, but you know, it was probably more or less. An active shooter incident, because you know, he was at the school, trying to make his way to the school. So he was able to prevent that and. We, they wanted to recognize him. So as soon as I got word of it. From the owner of Keith Oni Catering, Ferran Morgan, he's the one kind of started this whole thing. And you know, he gave me the, you know, what he wanted to do, the incident. So I reached out to the chief's office and, and I asked if anything was, you know, done for him. Within the, that we know of, but no one really knew any, if anything was done for him. So I submitted a nomination for an award for the Medal of Valor. To the chief's office prior to this event and that got approved. So Division Director, Mr. Henderson, came out along with Deputy Chief Leonard Williams for our briefing. And we invited Mr. Silversmith to our briefing. And his family and, you know, they came and we presented that Medal of Valor to him. Which, you know, we, we wanted him to be presented, because he's the grand marshal for the parade. We wanted to, you know, wear that. The medal during the parade. So he came out on Friday, we did our briefing and. Got him ready for Saturday. So the, the family were really grateful and, you know, they, they shed their tears and, you know, thanked. The Navajo Police Department, Public Safety, everybody who was in attendance, they were really grateful. So we did that on Friday and Saturday, he was wearing his. You know, the medal, Medal of Valor during the parade. Saturday afternoon, they, they were planning the appreciation dinner for him, which was, you know, for public safety. Along for Mr. Silversmith and his family. So it was another meal paid for, you know, by Keith Oni Catering. They provided the food for public safety on a Saturday. And so, you know, with that help, you know, that kind of helped with our cost of. Food throughout the weekend. Saturday was the most personnel we had, just due to the parade. So we're about fifty personnel, commissioned personnel coming from, you know, all the other districts. Along with EMS, Fire and Department of Corrections helping out. So overall, I believe, you know, we're. Guess I mean, at least for the Saturday with fifty personnel, you know, we're at, in that one day. Just because a lot of these officers come on their days off, so they're pretty much the whole. Ten hours assignment is overtime for them. It was easily over twenty thousand for Saturday, so. We're probably looking at close to fifty thousand of overtime, which, you know, these officers will be submitting to their. Districts and then forwarding up to headquarters for their overtime. But throughout the, the Thursday to Sunday. Calls for services, we had six hundred and eighty one calls for services. And we had our traffic team out there, so there was over a hundred and thirty on traffic stops conducted. Really no major events, nothing tragic or anything like that. DUIs, we have five DUIs throughout the weekend. And we had one possession of firearm, which, you know, they were able to confiscate a firearm on the traffic stop. Minor fender benders that happened, you know, at the parking lots of the fairgrounds. Or one to the turnoff to the fairgrounds. We had two accident with injuries, but that was not due to the. Any around the fair, it was in the district, but it wasn't in or around the, the fairgrounds or, or the parade. So. That was pretty much it. We started Friday, you know, Saturday, Sunday, you know, just to kind of. Knowing that money was an issue for overtime, for personnel. So we, we didn't start our operation until Friday afternoon or Friday evening. And we had our local officers, which, you know, we only have thirteen, they're the ones that kind of held it down. Thursday and then Friday morning for, for the Tubus City District. We worked our operations in, with communication, we run, we ran the Incident Command System. And we basically had our Incident Command here at the Police Department. Which consisted of myself, Lieutenant Fabian Thinn, who is running the evening. And we worked hand in hand with Navajo Nation EMS. For the day and night, just to basically have communication with EMS and Fire. So we all sat in the Emergency Operations Center Room. The morning time and the evening time. So that worked really good as far as. Communication and collaboration with all of public safety here in Tubus City. But that's the, pretty much all of what happened during this Western Navajo Fair. And this will conclude my report.
Thank you, Lieutenant Butler. So if you can go ahead and the report that you provided to us here today, if you could put that in writing and send that to this committee. Along with a budget breakdown of your personnel expenses, lodging expenses, meal expenses and your vehicle expenses. Lieutenant Sinisha just submitted an expense budget to us and that's the information that I think is relevant and important in this case. Because when we present to Budget and Finance, this will be a good opportunity to explain to them. Where some of their unmet needs have fallen and the cost of putting on a fair when it comes to providing public safety to our people. So if you could provide that report to us before next week on Wednesday by five o'clock, that would be great. So Wednesday next week is November fifth. By five o'clock, if you could get us that report and that way we have that in our record. Committee members, are there any of the questions or comments at this time for Lieutenant Butler? And just for the record, Vice Chair Nathan Nota joined us in the midst of the report. I didn't want to stop the report. So with that, committee members, if there's no questions at this time, since we're going to be receiving the black and white budget report. What we can do is when we see the legislation, Delegate Mitchell, we can call them back all at that time. To give us a updated report and then to also share with us the cost of public safety. Providing public safety at these fairs. Committee members, we're going to go to proceed to a roll call vote to accept the report here on the Division of, from the Division of Public Safety on the Northern Navajo Fair. And Western Navajo Fair. The presenters were Lieutenant Sinisha and Lieutenant Butler. And motion was made by Delegate Herman Daniels, the second by Delegate Stephen Arviso. Well, Lori, if you can assist us with roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Honorable Stephen Arviso, had diva. Honorable Stephen Arviso votes in favor, Honorable Herman and Daniels Junior. Honorable Herman and Daniels, who were both green, Honorable Harvey Mitchell. Honorable Harvey Mitchell votes green, Madam Chair, with three members in favor, zero votes, chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Lori. So with members, with the, the vote of three, zero, chair not voting. Actually, that should be four. Did you get Vice Chair Nathan Nota?
I'm sorry.
He's like. That's okay, because. Earlier Delegate, Delegate, Arviso was.
Nathan Nota votes green. Correction, Madam Chair, we have four members in favor, zero opposed, but.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Lori. The report from the Division of Public Safety on the Northern Navajo Fair and Western Navajo Fair is hereby accepted. Thank you, Lieutenant Butler. We're going to go ahead and excuse you at this time. We are now at item nine. On the agenda, we are at the close of the meeting. Is it nine or is it eight? Eight, sorry, eight with the amendments, may I got confused there. We are at close of the meeting, just for announcements, just a reminder, committee members and Vice Chair Nota. So we are going to, on November third. I'm sorry, no. Yeah, no, November third. November third, we verbally agreed to a special meeting. In lieu of the November twenty fourth meeting. Because November twenty fourth is the week of Thanksgiving. So instead of having our LOC meeting that Monday, because we know people are on travel. So we moved our media, is that correct, Lori? November third. So on November third at ten o'clock A M. Is a special Law and Order Committee meeting, so that's next week on Monday. And then on November tenth, we do have a Law and Order Committee meeting. And then November seventeenth, we have a Law and Order Committee meeting at ten o'clock. Where we have, we're going to invite the Judicial Conduct Commission. A letter will be sent to the Judicial Conduct Commission. We've invited them twice and they have failed to appear before this committee. So we're going to send a third letter along with a reminder that this committee does full subpoena powers. And if they do not come to the November seventeenth meeting, we will, we will issue a subpoena for them. Then on December. First. Per the law, we meet the second, third and fourth. So it was the same reasoning here. December first, we're going to have a special Law and Order Committee meeting. That's going to be in lieu of the December twenty second meeting. That way, the week of Christmas, because it's, yeah, so. Instead, we're going to do it the first Monday of December. And then December eighth. Is going to be a Law and Order Committee meeting and that's going to be in Rama.
December eighth?
Yes, December eighth is going to be in Rama. Where after that Rama meeting. After the Law and Order Committee meeting, we'll be scheduling a leadership meeting with Rory at City. After the LOC meeting. Cause he is the new Chief of Police.
What's his first name? I'm sorry.
Rory. At City is his last name. And then December fifteenth will be our LOC regular meeting. So that's just kind of a reminder in terms of announcement. We also have our next. Nabi Kiaske meeting. At this point, it's scheduled for November thirteenth. At ten o'clock. And then November eleventh is a holiday. It's a Navajo Nation holiday, right? Better than state? Yes, so the eleventh is a. Holiday. I also, that Vice Chair Nota also let the committee know that next week, technically, we were supposed to be at Tibic. However, because of the federal shutdown, there is no Tibic that it's been postponed. So that's why we scheduled a LOC meeting on Monday in lieu of the, the twenty fourth. That way, we don't, the week of Thanksgiving, we're not meeting. And then. We also have.
I'm sorry. My chair, the Tibic meeting that was postponed by the National Committee?
Yes, it was postponed by the National Congress of American Indians, because of the federal shutdown. Yeah, so we can't meet. Yeah, yeah, we can't meet for Tibic. So they went ahead and they sent out that email to all the Tibic members. They sent it out a couple of weeks ago. So that was supposed to technically be the week of November. And then just in terms of announcement, for those who are interested. Resources and Development Committee will be holding a public hearing. I'm not sure if they're going to be doing that every agency. But it's on Title twenty six, which is the chapter. That's going to be on November eighteenth at Ni Mahanzad. Delegate Rignaz's area. And then on the next day, they're going to be doing a grazing permit hearing. At Ni Mahanzad, the same, the same chapter. So you guys might want to just kind of put that on your calendar. If you can make it, great. If not, then that's okay. And then, of course, the twenty seventh, we have Thanksgiving and then we go into December. In addition to that, Vice Chair Nota, we did receive reports. We'll go ahead and make copies for you. These reports will be found. They were recommendations from Emeritus Justice Ray Austin. Who served as a Supreme Court Justice. He's making some recommendations on changes that have to be made to Title Seven regarding courts and procedure. And he provided a breakdown of those. So what we wanted to do is Emeritus Justice Austin is. Emeritus Justice Austin is, um, deaf, and he's also, uh. I don't, is he blind or does he have vision impairment? Well, we'll just say he has some type of vision impairment, uh, so he gave us a report. Um, in Tucson, from Tucson where he lives. Um, and so what we did is we allowed him to present to us.
Okay.
And, um, we also told him that on November seventeenth, we're moving with the Judicial Conduct Commission. He said that they have a copy of these recommended changes. So what we're gonna do is on the seventeenth, if the Judicial Conduct Commission does, um, show, we're gonna talk to them about this and then schedule. A, um, a meeting with, uh, Judicial Conduct Commission. With Emeritus, um, Justice Austin. Uh, and possibly, there's two locations that have been selected. One is NAU in Flagstaff, actually, three locations have been selected. NAU, Flagstaff, when arrows is the other option that, um, Emeritus Justice Austin said he's fine with. Where the third option is, uh, to meet with him in Tucson, um, where, where he lives. Um, so we told him that we're okay with three, with the three options, but we'll leave it up to him, whatever is easiest, since he does have those disabilities. We don't want to, um.
Sure.
Yeah, make him, uh, I guess, add more, more issues. Uh, onto his travel, uh, and make it difficult for him, so that's, uh, what, what we have a copy of. So we're gonna be scheduling that and hopefully in, on November seventeenth. And then, um, other than that, I think we are, are good. And then in terms of announcement, if you guys know, uh, the, the hearing has been going on. Um, regarding the injunction, if you guys get the chance, our responsibility within the code. Um, is we should also be, um. Evaluating, you know, we started the evaluation process on the judges, we started that a, a year ago. Um, so, and I've encouraged this council, this committee to do evaluations on judges. I've done an evaluation on Judge Livingston and Crown Point on criminal procedures. This might be a good opportunity for you guys to evaluate Malcolm Be Gay, uh, who is the current judge in this case right now. Um, but we, that was one of the, uh, issues that we discussed a year ago. Was to start the evaluation process, since that is within Title Two, under our, um, powers to do that evaluation. And the Bar Association has also submitted their evaluation surveys as well, which we do have copies of. So, um, just an FYI that the hearing is going to start back up on Monday. So I'm not sure, they haven't told us what time. Vice Chair Nota, I may not be here on Monday as a result of that, depending on what time. Uh, the, yesterday, I think they started yesterday at one thirty. Uh, so if they do an afternoon one, I'll be here, if not, then I'm, I, I'll probably be at the hearing. Uh, but I'll, I'll be in con, in communication with the committee. So, uh, are there any other announcements at this time, committee members? Okay, Delegate Mitchell?
The, it's a report that we heard on Title Seventeen, I think we should make that a priority. Also, it's titled Seventeen, we all know that our terms are immediate. I think one of the things that, um, with Slaters, we need to. Update or amend. Laws before.
Yeah, so what we'll do, Delegate Mitchell, is on November tenth, Lorraine. Let's go ahead and get a report from, uh, Chief Prosecutor Vernon Jackson. On the Title Seventeen Amendments. And, um. I don't know how the question, committee members. As you know, we've been going through this issue since, since twenty twenty-three. Um, maybe some of the other committee members, maybe he has a better relationship with you guys and maybe he'll listen to you guys. But at this point, we haven't had any movement on Title Seventeen, aside from. Um, he made the report to us during budget, that he was gonna work with another delegate. On those, um, amendments, but we've been pushing him from this committee since twenty twenty-three. And I don't know why he's running to another delegate for, for those, um, amendments, but we can push him as a committee again. Um, I don't, I, I don't know, because is, is he appointed? Um. Is he appointed, uh, uh, go ahead, Chris.
Well, you're thinking of the Title Seventeen Amendments, it's complete, it's gonna be going back to Honorable, um, Crowdy. And she's gonna be presenting it, so we completed the.
No, it's coming back to the committee, and we've had this discussion, I dropped legislation on that before Delegate Crowdy. And that's why I'm saying that he got upset and he ran to Delegate Crowdy. And it turned into like an issue, but Espino did, um, address both me and Crowdy, uh, and, um. I did tell Espino in front of Crowdy that it needs to come back to the committee, because we're the oversight.
We finished it Monday, the amendments. Um, it's gonna be, um, just, I'll, I'll look it up to see if it's appointed or not.
Okay. Um. So it looks like it's been done. So, committee members, uh, are there any questions at this time in turn of, in term of the, in terms of, of the announcement? Alright, so with that, committee members, and then I'll go ahead and I'll talk with Crowdy, um, again. Uh, to let her know that this committee has been pushing for those Title Seventeen Amendments. Uh, and that we technically dropped legislation in twenty twenty-three for those Title Seventeen. And, um, as a committee, we will proceed forward as sponsor of that legislation. Are we in agreement with that, committee members? Okay, so with that, uh, committee members, I'm open to hearing a motion and a second. Made by, uh, Delegate Stephen Arviso for adjournment at eleven thirty-four, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Second made by Vice Chair Nathan Nota. Uh, we'll go ahead and proceed forward to a vote at this time, Lori, if you can assist us with a roll call vote, please.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, this is roll call vote for adjournment. Honorable Stephen Arviso, how do you vote?
In favor.
Honorable Stephen Arviso votes in favor, Honorable Herman and Daniel Junior.
Great.
Honorable Herman and Daniel's junior votes green, Honorable Arvin Mitchell.
All green.
Honorable Arvin Mitchell votes green, Honorable Nathan Nosa.
I agree.
Honorable Nathan Nosa votes green, Madam Chair, with four members in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting, Madam Chair.
Thank you, four members in favor, zero opposed, chair not voting to adjourn at eleven thirty-four, thank you, committee members, we are hereby adjourned.